We're going to call a meeting to order. And, um, yes.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get this call started here.
Salt stream's not okay.
We're going to start out with an open public forum. I don't see anyone out here tonight, no care. Um, so, uh, if anyone else wants to talk, we're going to go on to approval of the agenda. Don, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Nope. Lyle, Pete?
Yeah, bushes and street sign.
Nothing here.
Jenny, do there hard copies of the agenda over there?
Yeah, just the top.
My computer decided to update.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's okay. I usually have them for you.
Well, it's just not in very close. Okay, Bob, did you have anything?
No.
Jenny, did you have anything to add to the agenda?
Anybody else need one?
I will add in a motion to accept the agenda as it stands.
Oh, move.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded, but duly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. The consent agendas, everybody had a chance to take a look at that, regular meeting, special meeting. Claims for the month, is there any questions on the claims? Ordinance? Resolution? If everything's okay, I'll, I'll entertain another motion.
So move.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Oh, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Over hearings, we have none. New business? Maybe Karen can talk about some of these things, if you have any input there. Uh, we're, we're going to be talking about Mike Doring and Pam Rol, the order for abatement, uh, for abate, two of eight. Uh, is there anything we want to add to that? Jenny, you want to update us on anything?
Did you get a chance to go by there? Yeah, it's better. It's better. A little better. You still got a ways to go, but it's, it's better. And I, I have no problem with, since Pam has till the 11th, to give them to 11th, I don't think we should go past that. Because he was originally, the original conversation was at the end of December. And then again in, in June, and again in, several times over the summer, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I can just talk about the legalities of this. Uh, the order for abatement for Mr. Doring is pretty much similar to the order for Pam. Uh, basically, what's, uh, we're trying to accomplish is, with nuisances, we can go-
Do you want to pull your mic closer to me?
With nuisances, we can either go the route of issuing citations and fining them for nuisance violations. Often, we've found that citing somebody that's really, doesn't solve the problem, sure they have to pay a fine, but our nuisance ordinance allows another route, which is the council can order the abatement of the nuisance, and then if it's not abated, then the city will go upon the property, clean it up. Uh, you've seen this order a couple of times now, and ordered them before. So, uh, with, uh, if you look at Pam's order, the number two, it says that this order is stayed until October 11th, 2016. With Mr. Dirk Doring's order, we would just need to add that language in number two as well. And then, uh, if October 11th comes and goes and it's not cleaned up, so the city will take care of the issue, bill the property owner. If and slash when it's not paid, then it'll be assessed against the taxes.
So they are both getting a slight extension, is what I'm understanding?
Mr. Mayor, who is Pam Wolf?
Well, she, she lives, as you can see on the order, it's 514 North Harbor. Uh, the issue, and I think you've actually been on these meetings when we talked about, um, with Darren, when we talked about-
Oh, she's got the shed.
She's got that shed in back, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, I got it. I went by Mike Doring's, it didn't look too bad to me, I mean, but-
Well-
He's kind of got it-
He's really trying.
He's got it kind of organized in the back, some of that.
Yeah, he came in and talked to me today, and he did have a trailer full of stuff, but I told him the driveway really needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, he has some old bikes there and stuff there. But it was a lot, lot, lot worse than it is now.
Yeah.
I've been by there for a while, but it was a mess.
I mean, it looks okay some days, and it looks not some other days.
Well, I think he's out of the business now, for recent.
I heard the story today.
Well, the problem is, is we have this come up about every year or so, every other year.
Mm-hmm. He's a recurring problem. Both of these addresses we deal with every year. I realize 514 North Harbor is a structural issue, but you're having nuisance things there as well, so. But I'm always, I always like to work with people, within reason.
And I, I think the extension is entirely reasonable, but I think the orders for abatement are good and fair too, because if we have an ordinance and, and we don't enforce it, then we might as well not have it.
Right, what's the point of having it, right.
So, that's to October 11th?
Yeah.
So we're asking you to issue the order tonight, but it says that it's stayed until the 11th.
So can I get a motion, and both of those do we do separately?
You can do them both if you want. The, the only reason you would do them separately is if, uh, the council would be inclined to pass one, but not the other.
I wouldn't wait past both with the extension to October 11th?
Well, I was going to ask if they could have to the end of October and November, and then, I mean, the 11th is kind of close, but-
I'm relieved my motion has been- He's, I started the junk conversation in December of 2015.
Okay.
And I told him today the 11th. We're talking a lot of conversations.
Okay, there is a motion, uh, for the 11th.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. What, planning commission member? Jenny?
We interviewed two candidates for planning commission, and the committee decided to recommend Troy Martin to be appointed to the planning commission.
Good.
If anybody has any, uh, question to ask, and I, I would entertain a motion to accept his appointment.
So move.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Sorry.
That's pretty close, I couldn't even call it.
Lyle's trying to get out of here, he wants to get tied.
Are Vikings on the night? Times again.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. And I would like to thank both people for applying for that position. We always have more people to tie for open boards. Okay, moving along. Set date to, uh, set a meeting date to canvass the election results. November 14th at seven o'clock, that was going to be our work session, so we're just going to-
We'll have us, as a special meeting, canvass the, the election results, and then go into our budget discussion after that.
Any questions on that?
We do that as a council?
Yes.
Do you need a motion on that?
No.
Do I need a motion on that? I don't think so.
No, just by consensus, that's fine.
Okay. I see no one finished business. Any administrators?
I don't remember what I typed anymore.
And Mr. Mayor, could I bring something up? Under new business, I should have spoken.
Oh, that's right. Um, Pete's got something too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well-
Bushes and street signs. I'm sorry.
The bushes, they're the same, same problem up here by, uh, Faith United Church.
Yeah, she trimmed them up, but they're not enough.
Yeah. People said they didn't even notice she trimmed them, but they knew she trimmed them, but they didn't. So they're asking it to be cut back further.
Can you send her? Okay.
Oh, okay. Karen, you are the person then that would, that would drive around and determine whether or not a tree, I'll be honest with you, when I go to, uh, you know, and I drive all the time right past the football field, and those trees on that corner, I think they've been trimmed back a bit, is that? Uh, right, right on the football.
Pine, it's like a pine tree issue?
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah. I mean, you, you really, you've got to get out a little way before you can see anybody coming from the left.
Sure.
On, on, yeah, Eighth Street.
Yeah. It, it is addressed in the ordinance.
Okay.
In the ordinance is.
Just drive by there, see what you think, maybe-
So I can certainly, you know, um, talk to the owners. Usually they're-
It's a school.
It's a school.
It's a school, yeah.
It's a football field.
Yeah.
But also-
Sammy Martin or whoever.
At Faith-
Sure.
It's a tough corner.
Mary Jennings, yes. And then, um, the one, they were cut by the post office, because those were getting- Yeah, Grossons, or Samuelson's old house. Those have been trimmed.
Yep.
You really dated yourselves, Samuelson's.
I did, after I said that, I thought, oh, God.
I knew exactly what you were talking about.
You would.
High graduate of Janine.
Oh, yeah, that's her, she's the one that owns it now.
All right, very good.
Okay, and the signs?
Yes.
On the west side of, what are, street signs?
The west side, okay.
Yeah, like, I know from mine, I think there's some maybe on the west side, but on, on the east side of the street, like on Second Street where I live, and the only reason I had, you know, not because I lived there, but somebody was looking for Second Street, like those numbers, and they got there, and there was no signs there, so they didn't know if they were in the-
Second Street?
Yeah. And so anyway, all on that west side, after you get by County 33, it's a mess. Some got some, some don't, some got some on the west side, some on the-
Just on 33?
Uh, yeah, on, or to the west side over there, but on the cemetery side.
On Brown Street there?
On Brown Street.
Do they never have them?
We did have them, and I asked Gordy about them, and he says, "Yeah, we got them," but that's as far as I get.
We have the same thing on 509 High Street, where Sibley Estates is, you've got the nursing-
Yeah, okay, yeah, people are looking for it, yeah.
Yes, I've got Mr. Johnson, Artie Johnson, that lives there, and people can't find him, you know, they can't get packages delivered. And I remember talking to you about this, and wasn't it put back to the county to see if we could-
Could call it Sibley Street and High Street?
Well, don't we call it High Street? Isn't it High Street?
Just the same as the, the east side.
High Street goes east and west. Sibley Street would be County State Aid 33.
Okay, but it's High Street that I'm-
Yeah, it's the streets going, it's the streets going this way.
Oh, and I did talk to Gordy about getting that signed, I don't know if he ordered it. I'll check with him, though.
But, but in all seriousness, there've been several people looking where what happened-
I'm glad you brought that up.
What happened to the street, yeah.
I will mention it to Gordy and have him get some signs ordered.
He tells me he's got signs, but I, you know.
This is such a big town, you know.
Well, you know, where people are getting deliveries, it is difficult, more and more people order online now.
It is, and, and Google's not the most accurate. A lot of our packages unfortunately end up at Edna Haheim's house, and she's not very happy about it, but we address them correctly, but when they, the person's shipping it, goes in to print the label, they'll say, "This is not a real address, do you want this address."
Well, here's an example. My house, when Woods is built, they changed my number to 409. And on my deed and everything, it says 407.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. So, no, no, the, the city did when they were numbering. So I just say 407, I mean, there is no 409, I mean, uh-
You know, and again, I go back to the city, about 20 years ago, they were like, "407 High Street," then they changed to 509.
Just messing with you.
Okay.
So if we could have, get our signs out there.
Yes, I will, I will talk to Gordy about getting street signs.
And, and what is, is there, is there some resolution at County State Aid 33? Can we call it a street?
We can call it Sibley Street if we want to.
Can we?
But the lodge is now addressed as County State Aid 33. So, we could have it Sibley passed there, you know, for Artie Johnson.
Pass the lodge.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, though?
Well, the lodge is already, it's the next street.
Yeah.
Right, right, but she's saying-
But we're talking about calling that street Sibley Street, or County State Aid 33, so.
Well, I think if they know what it's called, they can use that address.
Right.
If that's what it is, then-
But I think on Google, it's called Sibley Street.
Oh, it is.
I think so.
Really?
And it may not be until past the railroad tracks, so.
Oh, really?
I'm not sure, I'll have, I'd have to look, I didn't-
What do we have to do to get that changed?
We just have to put a sign up. Because we can call, according to the county, we can call it whatever we want. They call it County State Aid 33.
You know, for the, for the people living on that, it would probably be good to find out what it is on Google Maps or whatever, because you're right, when you order and try and ship things, when you order online and ship them, it will say, "Not a valid address." And, so we should find out and be consistent if we can.
I don't know if the signs make any difference or not, but on my GPS, there's a Second Street, doesn't exist. Though our numbers, it goes right up to the 33, and then after that, doesn't exist, yeah.
I don't know how you, if you can update that?
And I don't-
You can. I don't know if they actually change it, or if they just make you feel better and just say, okay.
Out on Oak Lane is not, doesn't register either.
Oak Lane doesn't register either, yeah.
So Google uses-
Because I've changed our address on there too, so that says 305 North Main Street, but I don't know if it doesn't go any farther than on my computer or not, you know, so.
Well, we should look into that, calling it Sibley, if that's what Google is using, if that's what people are, I, I need to talk to Artie tomorrow and find out, but, uh-
I think he wants, wants it Sibley.
Yeah, I think that's what he wants.
And that's fine, because Gordy was going to get a sign that said Sibley and High.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, wonderful, then you need-
I think those signs that, uh, we have, were just taken down and just need to be put back up.
Oh, good.
You know, I don't think we have to buy anything.
Yeah, he may have them in the shop.
Yeah, Mark Erickson explained at the last meeting that the gas station was going to be taken care of, and I've had at least a half dozen people approach me and say, "It looks terrible, it makes Winthrop look like a coast town." So Winthrop Opportunities owns it, Mark said we're going to have it down by winter.
It's not going to come down.
Pardon me?
It's not going to come down. That gas station.
Well, Mark said it would, Lyle?
He's going to fix it up.
He's got somebody-
Yeah.
It's sold.
The EDA, or, not, not the EDA.
It's sold.
Winthrop Opportunities, sold.
But the Opportunities doesn't own that.
Okay.
A developer owns it, yes.
Right.
Somebody's going to make a gas station out of it?
No.
No.
There was a contract for deed that has some performance issues built into it, so it involved the sale of the property from Winthrop Opportunities to the developer with a set purchase price, and then, um, the purchase price can be paid with some, uh, work done by the developer, and that includes, uh, trying to either tear down, build up a new business, or rehab it and give a new business in there. And the developer's been to a couple of EDA meetings, and at those EDA meetings, the developer has talked about how, uh, he hopes soon to have a business in there. So, um, you know, for the specific details of the contract for deed, it's probably not appropriate to get into that, because it's not the city's contract, it's Winthrop Opportunities, so if you want more information, it probably would be good to speak to somebody from there.
I'm, I just want to give these people an answer when they ask me.
Well, I talked to Gary Krueger, and I get back to you, and hasn't that?
Well, I think you can just tell people that it's not, you know, the, the city doesn't own it, Winthrop Properties did, and they've sold it.
The last meeting, you know, Mark said it was going to be, it was Winthrop Opportunities.
Right.
So it's been sold since then.
Yeah, well, Mark did say at the last meeting that it was being sold by Winthrop Opportunities.
Okay, okay. Just so I can answer people's questions, I-
And I think the plan is for something to happen in October or November, so I, I, you know, I think that is accurate. There's plans for things to happen before winter.
You do have to agree that it's an eyesore?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think Winthrop Opportunities has worked hard to, to get that property, you know, with the intent of doing something with it, and, and I give them credit for that, and at least it's moving on. I mean, it's been there for many years.
Lot of weeds over there.
That was the whole thing.
It wasn't that, the roof, it just looks bad.
Yes.
Yeah, they're going to put a roof, they're going to put new floor in there.
No, I mean, it just looks, right now, it looks-
Right now, it's terrible.
Well, do they have to take those tanks out, and I mean, which was an issue a little while?
Yes, yep.
Not that I, I think that's-
I'm, I'm happy with this explanation, yeah.
All right, um, do we have a report from Art, or Rita?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Oh, yes, yes, I read it all. Okay, I've got it, but I didn't read anything up until you. All right, um, city administrator, go ahead.
Um, Brian Petzel was out to look at Dean Conklin's culvert. Um, he's going to have his crew go look at it when they come do work on Eighth Street, because they're going to be out this fall yet to do some surveying for next year's project, and they're going to check it out. Then the street committee will probably meet, I would guess, with Don, and discuss what the results were before we meet with Mr. Conklin to discuss it. Um, the, the mayor wanted all the committees to meet prior to the budget hearing. We haven't met. I, we will meet in October, yes, we will meet in October. So we'll have to set up a police committee meeting, we'll have a street committee meeting, and when we discuss that other issue, we're going to have a park committee meeting this week, so we'll get them, we'll get them done. Um, Dana's complied, Meli's the garage, Dana's complied as far as securing the garage behind his house. Um, this is a false statement Friday, he called and said that he will be tearing the garage down in October, so.
What's that?
His garage is coming down.
Who?
Dana's.
Oh.
That was part of the, the order, was to, for him to let us know when it was, what his plans were, to either rehab it or take it down. Uh, the crossing flasher is not yet fixed. I did get a label from Tapco today, um, and I boxed it up, so we're just waiting for UPS to pick it up. They're going to test it and see if the components inside the box still work. If not, we're going to have to fix them and get that back up, but it's been a very long process. Uh, arc flash analysis, I talked briefly with Paul Kating about it. Um, he doesn't think we need a full analysis of every box, but he's been out on vacation. I was going to email him today, and I did not get around to that, but I will find out when he can come out, and Kelly would like to meet with him, and maybe the electric committee, and discuss that a little bit more, so. Uh, SIP rebates, GFW had some lighting work done over the summer, which qualified them for a $22,600 rebate. Um, so we don't have that much money left in our fund, but Kim, who is our CIP contact for MMPA, has advised that we can pay them out in December. That will use up the remainder of our 2016 SIP funds, and then they'll pay the balance of it in, with some of our 2017 funds. We'll still have money left for appliance rebates and, you know, stuff like that, but we won't have to actively try to get rid of those rebate funds.
That's a pretty big chunk of money, and, uh, it's the first time we've ever met our goal.
That's not true, Pete, we did two years ago, yes, we did.
Oh, yeah, down there at the-
Yes, DFA had some work done.
DFA, yeah, yeah.
But they were very happy to hear that they were getting that money back. Um, the electric rate study, I have contacted Dave Berg to get an estimate on what the electric rate study would cost. I did talk to him today, he's going to get me, um, a contract out with some information, and then I thought the electric committee could meet and go over his contract. He's, he's busy, he said, for the next two months, um, but what he would do is use a sample year of our, our funds, which we probably end up doing 27, in 2017, and he could do our unaudited 2016 financials instead of, if we did it now, we'd have to do our 2015 financials, and that might not be quite as accurate, so. I told him, "We're not in a hurry, we're just looking right now."
And if, you don't have to up rates or anything either, it's just to tell you-
Right.
Are we on schedule?
Of where, where we are.
Yep. So when I get that, we'll call an electric committee meeting and discuss that. Um, the Army Reserve Building, the realtor has, was receptive to us moving the monument, but he has to check with the Histor- Minnesota Historic Preservation Society as to whether they will allow it to be moved. Um, I sent him a letter stating our intent. Uh, they have, he sent that on to the Historic Preservation Society, and they have until November 1st to respond. Um, so obviously, that's not going to go up for auction in October, and it sounded to me like it, with winter coming, it might not go up for auction until spring.
Really?
Because they want to have an open house, I guess, and have people, interested parties, all these people who are interested in it, go through it.
And that monument part of it, I've talked to Ron Treble, or and Gordy's talked to Ron. Uh, we're thinking of a place where we could put it, you know, because we had discussed it last meeting.
Okay.
So-
Have they thought about a place, or?
Oh, by the tank.
Yeah, by the tank.
Yeah, somewhere near, build a base, and we'd have to hire a professional mover.
You're right, that's what I said.
Yes.
I will look at, that's a huge monument.
That's huge, I don't have to.
You weren't going to have to go out there with a payloader.
Right.
I thought he could go out there with the payloader and move it, but not-
Oh, man, so why?
I don't think we'd want him to do that anyway.
Some people say leave it there, but what do you want to leave it there for?
Whoever buys it, you know, want it there.
Right.
Right, and then we'd have to buy the land, and we'd have to mow it, and maintain it, and whatnot, so.
So are we free to make plans to move it?
Not yet. We won't know until November 1st.
Okay.
So, or, November 1st would be the latest we would find out, so. But, yeah, they were, they were receptive to it, so. Uh, the electric committee met to discuss more in depth the cross training issues, as well as arc flash analysis. Mayor Pearson would like to hold off on many job descriptions until employees have all had a chance to discuss it and ask any questions, so.
And we have had some, um, questions brought back, and again, before we do anything with changing their, uh, job descriptions, I want to make sure that we, as a council, are comfortable with it, and, um, you know, that it's something that we work with our employees also. But so, I want everybody to have a little, everybody, that I think it's the way to go.
That's all I have, unless you have anything for me?
Actually, cross training electric, that would also be for water. That's it?
You got anything for me?
Okay, uh, Water Street, uh, so, blah, 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 I don't see anybody else out here, was there, uh, I saw the police report. Uh, do you have anything you want to add now? Is there anything else you need to?
No.
Have you had a good day? We're way early here. I don't want, I, you guys are going to watch a football game, you're in a hurry here. Okay, thank you, Karen.
I've got something on mine.
Oh, okay.
Oh, he forgot all about you, geez, Don. He jumped right off.
Um, I'm actually going to talk about something in, uh, Mark's, uh, EDA report. He talks about the DQ house demo. Um, the EDA had me draft a contract for deed with the same developer who is dealing with the old BP station. And, um, so a lot of this has been going through the EDA, however, it's the council that has the final say with this issue, because it's actually the city, not the EDA, who owns the property. So, it's the old DQ house, and the contract for deed, uh, is for $8,000, so he gets to purchase the DQ house for $8,000. It says that he has to tear down the house within a certain timeframe. Uh, we, we said the cost of tearing down that house was $8,000. So, um, he, he has to tear it down with a certain amount of time, and then he has five years to develop that property, by developing, putting some sort of business, or make some other good use of the property. If he doesn't do that within the five years, then, uh, the ownership of the land goes back to the city. The contract for deed also says that if the land goes back and he's torn down the house, then the city or EDA would reimburse him the $8,000 for the, the cost of tearing it down. So, um, the EDA has approved it, um, I'm told that the developer has signed the contract for deed. I haven't seen proof of that yet, myself is trying to get me a signed copy, but it's Mark's- So, um, the EDA has approved it. Um, I'm told that the developer has signed the contract for deed. I haven't seen proof of that yet. My staff is trying to get me a signed copy, but Mark's...
He hasn't brought it back. I don't know if he was, I thought, I was under the impression that he was gonna sign it and bring it back to City Hall.
Okay.
And then I was gonna have the EDA people sign it, but I haven't seen it.
But the city signs often, correct, or is the EDA and the city?
It's, it's not the EDA that should sign it, it's the city, because the city owns the land.
Well, that's why I thought that, that the contractor was gonna have, sign it and then have, bring it to City Hall here.
And that's why I was confused by Mark's report that says that Jason Keister and the EDA have both signed a contract for deed.
Okay, and I emailed him, but he has not gotten back to me yet, so...
Yeah. So in the, if the EDA has signed it, well, we'll probably have to tear that up and just get a new one, 'cause the city's the one that's gonna sign it. Anyway...
They, they knew that. I mean, I know Mark has known that, they've talked about that.
Yeah, every time it's come up to me.
It had to be approved by the city council.
Yeah.
I remember him saying that at the EDA meeting, even, so...
Were you at the last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure I remember Mark saying, you know, pending council approval.
Mark talked about last one.
You were there too, yeah, yeah.
So that's why, and that, and I was pretty sure he said that he was gonna sign it and bring it back to City Hall here, and I haven't seen it yet, so...
So long story long, um, you know, we probably should wait until we get the signed copy from Jason to bring before you, 'cause you shouldn't approve something you don't have before you.
Right.
Um, so if we can put this on the agenda for the special meeting on the fourteenth, we can have you formally approve it, then, and hopefully we can get it in your packet so you can see it before you.
Well, that's November fourteenth, it was a special meeting.
Yeah.
We could do it on November first.
A regular meeting on the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I suppose.
If you get it back.
If you get it back.
Well, Mark will be back by then, so we'll find out what's going on.
But that, this has been carrying on.
But this should be on the agenda.
Stories about what's going on that they're kinda confused.
Yeah.
What are you confused by?
Well, I thought this guy was gonna, we gave him the lot if he tore the house down, and then...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's basically true.
Now, you said he's gonna buy it for eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, and the eight thousand dollars is for the, the cost of tearing it down, so basically, it's, the, the price is tear it down, and the price for tearing it down is eight thousand.
Well, originally, they were gonna have the city tear it down.
That was talked about, yeah.
Yeah, it was talked about here in the meeting.
Yeah.
So like I say, I don't know. And I agree with him. People uptown ask me, and they say, "That's EDA and Opportunities. We, we as a council have to sit and wait," you know, but they think...
Uh, this is all EDA, and we shouldn't have to wait.
No, no, EDA and Opportunities, about both. They talk about both, that it's...
Right, right.
It's, you know...
But, um, you know, and this is, this is a city issue, it's just the EDA has done most of the legwork on it.
If we can get a business out of it, it's not a bad deal. If we don't, well, I tear it down. And, and I probably shouldn't say that, because I don't know how much to...
Eight to tear it down?
It's, it's eight thousand dollars.
That was the estimate?
Yeah.
To haul.
And that's everything.
A lot of asbestos.
And I believe...
Was it?
Gravely, something hauled in so that it's flat and level.
It'll be level, it'll be...
Yeah, eight thousand dollars is cheap, right?
And that is the deal, so, I mean, there is, there shouldn't be any more speculation, and that's, that's what the deal is, that you guys can approve or not approve.
Get a business out of it, that's not a bad price.
I'll find out, and we'll have it on the agenda for the November meeting, so...
This, uh, deal about a business potentially looking at, do we have enough property out there at the present, uh, site?
Yes.
We have options, though.
I mean, there is enough room there, yeah, okay.
My understanding, talking to Mark.
Okay.
That, all that one that he was talking about, yes.
Yeah.
Don, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Nothing? Come on, Don. We're still early here.
Mr. Mayor, I got a, I got a comment here.
Yes.
Do you, does the council recall, we, uh, allotted the schools six thousand dollars for the camera thing?
Yes.
That's pretty much completed, so I don't know, Jenny, have you got a bill?
They've never contacted me.
They know, and not only that, but they didn't do our part.
Yeah, they did not do the part that we asked them to do either, so...
They did not do our part.
What, what was our part?
They were supposed to have some cameras out towards the park.
We were going to buy some cameras with them and put them in the park, and they were gonna be supposed to contact me whether or not, but, you know, needless to say, they have not contacted me about reimbursing.
Well, Wade just reminded me the other day that the city committed six thousand dollars to a camera project.
But that was also us getting our cameras, correct?
Well, not the cameras, but at least the installation of the cameras, wasn't it?
We were gonna buy some with them and pay for the extras in addition to the six thousand, but they should bill us. I mean, or let us know, I don't...
Do we own the six thousand?
We, well, the council made a motion to contribute.
Yeah, I guess technically we do, but they haven't fulfilled their total obligation, as far as I'm concerned.
So should we get a lawyer?
I was just about to see what the language was in that...
What do you think, Don?
I can look up the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, I think someone should talk to him, 'cause the way I remember it too, is one of the reasons the council voted the way it did was we were going to get the cameras in the park, and they were gonna help install that, so if they're not fulfilling that, I, I don't think the council has, uh, a full obligation, um, to, to honor its motion. But there needs to be a discussion, we need to talk about it and figure out what they think.
We're, we're the only city that...
Yeah.
Yes, the other councils didn't go for it.
And they also didn't have, you know, their city park next to the school.
Right, that was a big part of it that we thought was worthwhile.
Well, let's find out, we'll find out.
I will look it up.
Have we got some outside, Pete?
What?
Cameras?
Oh.
As far as I know.
Oh.
There's one by the door, right outside the...
Um, maybe it's just an oversight on their part, and if we talk with them, maybe they'll say, well, hey, let's purchase the cameras and install, maybe the problem will go away.
The reason I'm saying this is all he said, he's gonna approach the council with, uh, with the motion we made at that time.
I'll give Wade a call.
Talk to him.
It's always something.
Okay.
You sure, Bob? Come on.
I'm, I'm happy we did go in with him on that, but I mean, I just, what I'm saying is, we kinda got left behind there somewhere.
I'll give Wade a call and see what he has to say.
Yeah. Bring him in front of us, we'll send him.
Yeah.
You know him. You know him now, too.
I know him.
Okay. Were there any other reports? I saw another report from the, uh, committee?
Nothing. I didn't even get a MMPA report this week.
I wasn't there.
The last thing I had in here, I wanted to go through the budget page by page.
Yeah, right.
Next, Pete.
Line by line, right?
By my line.
I'm ready.
Pete's ready.
I'm ready, I got, got it, Mark.
You just made his night.
Well, we need a quarter, but I think we're gonna lose in about two minutes.
Yeah.
I will, um, I see nothing else on here, uh, we've taken care of that business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made?
Second.
Second, all who oppose, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same side.